Good evening.
Good evening.
Let's call the Town of Maryville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, December 13th, 2016, together at 6:31. At this time, we'd like to stand for the invocation from Father John Paffkin, St. John of our Church, and please remain standing for the.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening asking for your guidance and wisdom and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussions. Allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of the community of Maryville. Fill us with your grace, our Lord and God, as we make decisions that might affect the town of Maryville. And continue to remind us that all that we do here today, all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name forever and ever. Amen.
Amen.
For the allegiance of the flag of the United States of America, and for the withdrawal of all these sanctions, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Gurney.
Man.
Here.
Minchuk.
Here.
Use that.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Edith.
Here.
Lamarcus.
Here.
Mr. President, we have a quorum. Petitions, communications, acknowledgements, remodifications, Mr. Spires. I don't have anything this evening. Okay, I don't have anything either. Consent agenda, council payable register voucher approval for December 13th, 2016, along with the approval of Town Council meeting minutes from November 23rd, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Baron, that we approve the council payable register voucher for December 13th, along with the Town Council meeting minutes from November 23rd. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Standing committees, budget and finance, Councilman Pettit.
No report.
Public Works, Councilman Span.
Uh, Bruce, Attaboy for the leaves.
Okay.
And the plowing was spectacular.
I'll pass that on.
All that snow that was coming down.
I do have one thing, though, Mr. President. I left the, and I apologize for the short notice, but I left everybody a letter in front of them from Washington Kelly indicating that they want to extend their contract into 2017. Um, I've just recently found out that the concrete prices are starting to increase. And I've been informed by a couple of people that they anticipate them to keep increasing. So I would strongly recommend that the council move to approve extending, uh, the Washington Kelly contract at the current pricing that we had. Actually, this will probably be our third year we've done it. So you're looking at probably like two, 2013 pricing.
Do you want a motion now?
Yes, please.
Okay, I recommend that we keep the contract.
Second.
For Bruce and Kelly at this time.
Motion.
This coming year.
Motion by Councilwoman Yuzelak, second by Councilman Span, that we continue with the current contract for Washington Kelly. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, anything else on the public works?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, council affairs, Councilwoman Yuzelak.
No report.
Personnel, policy, and employee benefits, Councilwoman Baron.
Yes, we had our meeting today for the insurance. First meeting, not so well. Second meeting, very good. It's a transition with insurance. It's different than what we have. Um, but it's gonna be good insurance. I have the insurance now. Maryville is cheaper than what I have, so that's good. Um, the First Midwest Bank will be at the Town of Maryville from 8:00 a.m. at Public Works, the 19th, 10:00 a.m. at the fire station, from 12:00 to noon at Town Hall, and then on the 20th, First Midwest Bank will be here to help the employees set up their account from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
That's HSA account?
For the HSAS.
All right. Anybody else have anything else on the personnel? Okay. Uh, public safety, Councilwoman Yuzelak.
Yes. Uh, the town through the ambulance service committee has interviewed three, has interviewed three providers for townwide service effective February 1st, 2017. The committee is recommending that the Town Council approve Superior Ambulance Service. At this time, I would like to make a motion that the Town Council accepts the committee's recommendation and authorizes the town manager with assistance from the Town Attorney's Office and the Fire Chief to prepare a service contract for Town Council approval.
Second. A motion by Councilman Pettit, I mean by Councilwoman Yuzelak, second by Councilman Pettit, that we approve Superior Ambulance Service as that new provider effective February 1st of 2017. Uh, this is Mary Franco. She's one of the VPs from Superior. If anyone has any questions, Mary's here to answer them.
Oh, do we know where they're gonna store that, or put the ambulances while they're here?
Well, right, right now, they've got, uh, one, they've got a garage out on 90th and Mississippi, out by Shawnee. And, uh, they are, they've, they looked today, they went through town today trying to identify a site north of Grand Trunk. And once they, they, once they secure a site there, they looked at three possible sites there. So there's gonna be a possibility that something's going to shake out out of those three sites, or if they find something else. And then they're still exploring something here in this area, around 73rd, between 73rd and, uh, 30. That's cause they, to concentrate on the west side, because they think that their, uh, garage over by, over on Mississippi will cover the Panhandle all the way out to, uh, the water park. So I think that, uh, uh, they're excited about it, and they're, you know, I, I think the plus for them is that they are, um, interested in being a stakeholder in the, in the town and providing the most, the best service that they possibly can. Any other questions?
A comment, Mr. President, members of the council, just, uh, as I understand the motion, it's subject to successful negotiation of written contract terms with the provider.
Right. Any other, uh, and if for everybody's benefit, the, uh, selection committee was, uh, Councilwoman Lamarcus, myself, Councilman Minchuk, Chief Yurga, Chief Patruche, and, uh, Ross Township Trustee, Joshy.
And I was also on the committee, but out of town.
Yeah, but Marj was vacationing in Florida.
Yes.
So she couldn't be here. But, uh, anybody else have any questions for, uh, Superior? If not, let's do a roll call, Mr. Gurney.
Okay. Span.
Yes.
Minchuk.
Yes.
Use that.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Edith.
Yes.
Lamarcus.
Yes.
And Hardaway.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Welcome.
Yeah, thank you so much for this opportunity. Um, we are so grateful and really look forward to working with all of you. Um, as Mr. Hardaway mentioned, we are in the process of looking at locations, so if there's anything, any locations that any one of you could recommend that you know is available, we would love, um, you know, to, to look at those. As mentioned, we will work quickly and diligently to make sure that, um, we secure something by February 1st. Um, our commitment to the town is to have three, um, advanced life support ambulances. Um, we've been in Maryville for about, I think, 13 or 15 years now. We have five ambulances already in town, so we know that we'll be able to support, um, additional resources as needed. So thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
And welcome again. Uh, Parks and Recreation, Councilwoman Lamarcus.
No report.
Environmental Affairs, Councilwoman Baron.
No report.
Elections and public relations, Councilwoman Lamarcus.
Um, yeah, I'd just like to thank Jan, who unfortunately is not here tonight, and the Parks Department for putting together the holiday parade. Um, last Friday, I think it went over very well, and they did a great job of putting everything together.
And I agree with you. I think that it was an excellent opportunity, uh, short parade, and, uh, if you ride by a Prozen Park right now, you'll see some great lights out there. So, uh, Jan is to be commended. Unfortunately, for those of you who don't know, Jan lost her mother, and so that's the reason why she's not here tonight. Uh, okay. Economic Development, Councilman Pettit.
No report.
Utility liaison, Councilwoman Baron.
No report.
Uh, abandoned properties, Richard Hardaway. Where are we at, uh, Mr. Bishimi, on getting the tax certificates for the, uh...
We're waiting to get revised tax sales certificates on the three adjoining parcels on Broadway, which are 57, 56, 18, 5624, and 5612.
12, yeah.
Still waiting to get them from the Board of Commissioners.
All right. Um, Bruce, is my understanding that you contacted Tramell Rags at the county to get a list of the properties that are on, uh...
Yes, I did.
Did he give it to you yet?
Haven't received an email yet.
So much for his 24-hour turnaround time. I read the letter.
Okay. Yes, but I did email him, so I will email him again tomorrow.
I thank you, because we, uh, we need to see where we are with that. And then one more, uh, Mr. Bishimi, what about the property that's right next to that, uh, school that you were looking to get the wife signature or something on?
Uh, we have that, and I simply need to record the deed, Mr. President.
Okay.
We have that secured.
All right, if we can get that, uh, recorded, so that we can pursue getting rid of that one. And then once you record it, then we'll talk about how we want to try to dispense with that one. Uh, general orders, first reading ordinance, ordinance 16 dash 39, establishing internal control standards and creating materially threshold for the town pursuant to IC 5 dash 11 dash 1 dash 27.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilwoman Yuzelak, that we approve order 16 dash 39 on first reading. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Span.
Yes.
Minchuk.
Yes.
Use that.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Edith.
Yes.
Lamarcus.
Yes.
And Hardaway.
Yes. Motion carries seven to zero. Uh, order 16 dash 40, an ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, appropriating additional monies within the Noxious Weed Fund for the year 2016, not included in the current budget.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Yuzelak, that we approve order 16 dash 40. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Span.
Yes.
Minchuk.
Yes.
Use that.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Edith.
Yes.
Lamarcus.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay, President, I'd like to, uh, to Mr. Bishimi, John, on, um, 1639 and 1640, do we have to do separate motions to suspend the rules, or can I make a motion to suspend the rules for both ordinances?
Add it for both ones, too.
That motion can be a combined motion for both ordinances.
Do we need all...
Yeah, can you, can you include 41?
The parks, okay. I make a motion, we suspend the rules, and read ordinances 1639, 1640, and 1641 on second reading?
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Yuzelak, that we suspend the rules on ordinances 1639, 1640, and 1641 to be read on second reading. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Okay, se, that concludes first reading ordinances, second reading ordinances. Uh, order 16 dash 35, uh, an ordinance of Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, appropriating additional monies within the Fire Territory Cumulative Fire Equipment Fund of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, for the year 2016, not included in the current budget.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilman Span, that we approve order 16 dash 35 on second reading. Is there any discussion?
Chief, is this for the, uh, the remodel?
Uh, yes.
Part of, part of it's for the remodel? They're doing outstanding job.
Yeah, we had, uh, that's to make up the difference. We had money in the 2016 budget, and this is appropriating more money into...
Okay.
Which should be encumbered into 2017.
Any other discussion? Because this is the second reading ordinance, we'd like to open it up to the public for any public comment on order 16 dash 35. Any public comment on order 16 dash 35? Any public comment? Roll call, please.
Span.
Yes.
Minchuk.
Yes.
Use that.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Edith.
Yes.
Lamarcus.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay, President, I'd like to, uh, to Mr. Bishimi, John, on, um, 1639 and 1640, do we have to do separate motions to suspend the rules, or can I make a motion to suspend the rules for both ordinances?
Add it for both ones, too.
That motion can be a combined motion for both ordinances.
Do we need all...
Yeah, can you, can you include 41?
The parks, okay. I make a motion, we suspend the rules, and read ordinances 1639, 1640, and 1641 on second reading. Is there any more discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Okay, se, that concludes first reading ordinances, second reading ordinances. Uh, order 16 dash 35, uh, an ordinance of Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, appropriating additional monies within the Fire Territory Cumulative Fire Equipment Fund of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, for the year 2016, not included in the current budget.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilman Span, that we approve order 16 dash 35 on second reading. Is there any discussion?
Chief, is this for the, uh, the remodel?
Uh, yes.
Part of, part of it's for the remodel? They're doing outstanding job.
Yeah, we had, uh, that's to make up the difference. We had money in the 2016 budget, and this is appropriating more money into...
Okay.
Which should be encumbered into 2017.
Any other discussion? Because this is the second reading ordinance, we'd like to open it up to the public for any public comment on order 16 dash 35. Any public comment on order 16 dash 35? Any public comment? Roll call, please.
Span.
Yes.
Minchuk.
Yes.
Use that.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Edith.
Yes.
Lamarcus.
Yes.
And Hardaway.
Yes. Motion carries seven to zero. Order 16 dash 38, an ordinance of Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, amending order 16 dash 37 and pay for employees of the Town of Maryville, Indiana, for the calendar year 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Yuzelak, that we approve order 16 dash 38 on second reading. Is there any discussion? Because this is the second reading ordinance, we'll open it up for public comment at this time. Is there any public comment on ordinance 16 dash 38? Any public comment? Any public comment? Roll call, please.
Span.
Yes.
Minchuk.
Yes.
Use that.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Edith.
Yes.
Lamarcus.
Yes.
And Hardaway.
Yes. Motion passes. Ordinance 16 dash 39, establishing internal control standards and creating a material, a materially threshold for the town pursuant to IC Code, IC 5 dash 11 dash 1 dash 27.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Baron, that we approve order 16 dash 39 on second reading. Is there any discussion? Since this is the second reading ordinance, we'd like to open it up for public comment. If there's any public comment on order 16 dash 39. Any public comment? Any public comment? Roll call, please.
Span.
Yes.
Minchuk.
Yes.
Use that.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Edith.
Yes.
Lamarcus.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries six, seven, zero. Order 16 dash 40, an ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, appropriating additional monies within the Noxious Weed Fund for the year 2016, not included in the current budget.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilman Span, that we approve order 16 dash 40. Is there any discussion? And because this is the second reading ordinance, we'd like to open it up for public comment on order 16 dash 40. Is there any public comment? Any public comment? Any public comment? Roll call.
Uh, Span.
Yes, sir.
Minchuk.
Yes.
Use that.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Edith.
Yes.
Lamarcus.
Yes.
Yes. Motion, six, seven, zero. Order 16 dash 41, an ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, fixing the parks, non-reverting program fees for the year 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilman Span, that we approve order 16 dash 41 on second reading. Is there any further discussion? Uh, because this is the second reading ordinance, we'll open it up for public comment on order 16 dash 41. Is there any public comment? Any public comment? Any public comment? Roll call, please.
Span.
Yes.
Minchuk.
Yes.
Use that.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Edith.
Yes.
Lamarcus.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries seven to zero. That concludes second reading. Ordinance says resolutions. Resolution 16 dash 34, a resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the 2016 budget within the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund budget.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Yuzelak, that we approve resolution 16 dash 34. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Resolution 16 dash 35, a resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the 2016 budget within the Recycle Grant Fund budget.
So moved.
Motion by Councilwoman Yuzelak, second by Councilman Pettit, that we approve resolution 16 dash 35. Um, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Resolution 16 dash 36, a resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, authorizing the repayment of temporary loans as of 12/1/16.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Yuzelak, second by Councilman Pettit, that we approve resolution 16 dash 36. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Resolution 16 dash 37, a resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, authorizing the repayment of temporary loans as of 12/1/16.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilwoman Yuzelak, resolution 16 dash 37. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Resolution 16 dash 38, a resolution of Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, authorizing the repayment of temporary loans as of 12/1.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilwoman Yuzelak, that we approve resolution 16 dash 38. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, resolution 16 dash 39, a resolution of Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the 2016 budget within the General Fund budget.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilwoman Yuzelak, that we approve resolution 16 dash 39. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, resolution 16 dash 40, a resolution of Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, concerning the holiday schedule for the calendar year 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilwoman Yuzelak, that we approve resolution, uh, 16 dash 40. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 16 dash 41, a resolution of Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies within the Maryville Fire Territory Operating Fund of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, for the year 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Yuzelak, seconded by Councilman Span, that we approve resolution 16 dash 41. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 16 dash 42, a resolution of Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, authorizing the repayment of temporary loan as of 12/17/16.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Yuzelak, seconded by Councilman Span that we approve resolution sixteen dash forty-two. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That concludes resolutions. About thirty seconds there. And there's no BZI action tonight, is there any old business? Any new business? Councilwoman Baron, you want to talk about the letter of support that we did for?
Yes, we did, letter of support. Um, there is some people that are interested in building a veterans, I guess, I would just call it a community.
Yeah. Armored.
Or, um, disabled vets or veterans that, um, not making good ends meet that are homeless in my ward. And I totally support this. I think that when you, when you become somebody who takes it upon themselves for one reason or the other to put this country first, sign up to go into a branch of the military and you basically sign your life on the line because you don't know what's going to happen in war. I can't tell you what an honor it is and how somebody deserves the utmost respect for putting their life on the line and doing it so thankless that they go to war, some of them come back missing a limb, some of them don't come back at all. You have somebody who is giving, has gave so much of their life to this country, to see them where they're not getting the care that they deserve or that they're homeless is a big step in the face to them, but it's a big shame on us. These veterans and these men and women that put their life on the line for our freedom is something that we as elected officials or even not elected officials should be looking at in praising the people that protect this country and protect us is something that we all should be doing. It shouldn't be anybody that has ever served in the army or that they've gone to war or not be homeless is, I, I, I don't have any words to say, shame on us and we should be ashamed of ourselves. We are a country of free, we're free. We can speak our minds, we can say what we want to say, we can be a football player, make millions and not know what it's like to serve a day and, at war and take a knee on a football field during a national anthem, which I think is, I have a different opinion, but I won't say here. We should be doing more for our veterans to not do anything to help people that have fought for us is just shameful. I think it's a good idea and I support it wholeheartedly. I know that there's a moratorium in place on apartments, but I don't consider this an apartment. I would look at all of you and ask you the same thing. Would you consider something that is going to be built for the men and women that have put our rights and this country safe? I would think not, but I think it's a good thing and I'm glad that they're coming to Maryville and I feel very honored and very blessed that they want to come to my ward. And I feel very honored that they're coming to the town of Maryville.
I have a question, Mr. President. I'm sorry, Mark.
Oh, I have a question too. Are you proposing an apartment building to be built or what is?
It's not an apartment building. It's, it's going to be, um, what'd they say, seventy-four?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five units. I wouldn't consider that an apartment building. Um, but if they wanted to build a building, an apartment complex that had a hundred or two hundred units in it, I wouldn't say no to it.
Oh, I understand. So then it might be on the line of condos, maybe something like that?
It's going to be, well, it's going to be.
It'll be one bed, one bedroom units.
Oh, one bedroom units, okay. And when will this take place?
Well, we don't know yet.
Okay.
We don't know because they're, they're trying to get funding for it.
Okay, it's a proposal right now.
It's a proposed idea.
Okay, fine, thank you.
Uh, the letter, Rich, says, and, and I had to meet, I had, I had an initial meeting with a group. The letter says at Broadway and East Ninety-third Avenue. Is this on the east side of Broadway?
No, it's going to be on west side.
They moved the location because I gave them the eleven acres on the south side next to the strip mall by Pinnacle as a possible location when I met with it. Is this still Milner and Sernaglia?
Same.
It's the same group, okay. All right.
What they're looking at, Councilman Pettit, is that they're, they're looking to get land from the diocese.
Okay.
So that, and.
And we talked about that when I met with them in that area, being as close proximity to the VA as they could, yeah.
Close proximity to the VA clinic.
Right.
If anybody, you know, any veterans are there, then they could just walk across the street as opposed to try to get transportation.
Right, and the network, we talked about the Ninety-third Avenue sidewalk network, both on the east and west side of Broadway.
Right.
Okay.
So, yeah.
All right.
So, you know, I support it and there's three veterans sitting up here that I know that, you know, Mr. Guernsey, I know you support it too. So, is there anything else under, um, new business? And thank you, Councilwoman Baron, for that, uh, it's beautiful for veterans. You know, because the three of us, we were there during the, uh, the big war that we call the big war. All right, pu- public comment. At this time, we'd like to open it up for public comment. And sir, we ask that you come up, state your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
What does that mean?
Yes.
First person. Oh, this is Mr. Van Teal.
Right.
How are you, George?
Uh, well, I've got my health problems or I would have talked to some of you about my, my concern tonight and hope you indulge me a little bit for maybe a couple more than three minutes. Uh, talking about a quality of life issue that I read about in the, oh, I'm sorry, George Van Teal, seven oh three, East Ninety-second Avenue, Maryville, uh, about a five or six year resident. Uh, and I, I'm concerned and I, I saw an article in the paper which I found interesting about possible park, uh, board in, in the town of Maryville. Years ago, I served on a park board, was appointed to the park board in the town of Highland. Uh, shortly after I was served on the council, I was elected to the council for, uh, eight years. Um, and I'm a strong believer in that and, and I just want to share some of my reasons, my reasons why. And, and I know there are some concerns also. Uh, and maybe I can just give you some comparisons. Um, the, the critical thing really is, I know you're all busy, been there, done that. Uh, and you, and you have different issues in the town that take up your time. And if you're like most of us, and we're, and my colleagues were, uh, there's certain things that interest you and you become, you get expertise in. And frankly, there's some things that you won't admit this to your constituents, but that kind of bore you. But then the next guy, he really likes that and so he gets all, you know, and, or she gets involved in that and they become the expert. And, but with the parks, it's, everybody's concerned, but there's so many other things. If you get park appointees and you can, you can appoint four, as you probably know, and if you choose to, you can have the school board appoint one and the park, uh, Lake County Park Department, uh, appoint one also. So you can have, you can have as many as six or as few as four. And of course, the four, uh, two have to be Democrat, two have to be Republican. But the nice part about that is they become the ones that do the tracking, the planning, uh, and they report you. Uh, they do the work, they have the public meetings and you have one liaison, whoever on the town council, uh, is the most interested or is the closest to the president and get, can get appointed to it. Um, but you, you know, that, that, that works and you get more citizens involved that way. Uh, and people know, hey, this is park board meeting night, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, in terms of the money, uh, the, the final approvals are always with you. Um, they, they work on the budget, they submit a budget to you, you finalize it, but they, again, they do, they may know, and you get a good park, uh, board member, they're going to end up knowing more about it than you. And that's okay because you got it all to take care of and there're only one. But they can work on that budget. They can also propose bond issues to you. Give you an example, in the town of Highland, the, uh, it's a two, and they're somewhat smaller in terms of population. Right now, it's a two point eight million dollar budget for park and rec. I suspect that's substantial, substantially more than yours. Um, but it's a quality of life issue. It helps home values, it helps, helps the people, it helps our young people. Um, and, but this is a critical thing, of the two point eight million dollar, uh, budget, park and rec budget, about two million of that is raised by, by fees, by all the other things that the park department does. Now, you wouldn't be able to do that in Maryville right away, but as you build up, as you have, as, as time, you know, you, you, you start with different programs and different facilities and all that kind of stuff. And pretty soon it comes up like that. So it's two point eight million roughly and two million of that is raised, so we actually only have to go to the taxpayers for, uh, eight hundred thousand. In terms of bonding, um, off the top of my head, I think, and of course, as, as John knows, uh, you know, you can add, you can add two percent onto, uh, your bonding capacity in, in the town of Maryville. Um, you may not want to do that right now, uh, but at any time you really need something or say the park department came up with this wonderful idea, um, you didn't have any money, money in the regular, you can put before the citizens and yourself, you know, do we want to, uh, spend some money on this? I think the town of Highland, again, use it as a reference and it's based on assessed valuation, uh, times three, I think. You can, uh, I think town of Highland has maybe seven, seven million dollars, uh, and that they, they can use, uh, for bonds. Um, right, and I think they're using two million right now. So they got five million laying out there that they can use, but only if the town council says they can. And that's the beauty of it. They get involved, they make things work, but you, you got the authority on, on all those things. So as a former town councilman, I was always worried about someone getting out there and, and you know, the, the buck stops at you, you know, the voters come to you in the end and either raise hell with you or like what you're doing and they don't worry about Joe Blow who you appointed to that. So you can always say yes or no. So I just, I just wanted to bring that up a little bit. Town of Marys, Mary, Maryville, as I found out, has a lot of assets, um, you know, and, and some good officials that are looking for more and better things. And, and I just believe that if you have a, a park board and a park department, and you end up getting better people too. When you have a professional, uh, park board or a board that runs a professional department, you're going to get better people and more people that are going to want to serve, uh, and work. I think the town of Highland has about a dozen people.